City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded December 18th, 2023.
I have seven o'clock. We will call the regular meeting of the common council to order. I see Clerk Yenter is on with us. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Christensen?
Here.
Shore?
Here.
Keemer?
Here.
Broderick?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Plisance?
Here.
Niebon?
Here.
Shuda?
Here.
Lang?
Here.
Fischler?
Here.
Marl?
Here.
Everyone is present. If you could please stand and join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a few opening remarks here. First, I need to let everyone know that the city offices will be closed for Christmas and Christmas Eve, next Monday and Tuesday, the 25th and 26th. It's specifically important because many people try and get their taxes paid before the first of the year to take advantage of any tax advantages they have this year, but we're not going to be open Monday or Tuesday of next week, so make note of that. And then, the other thing I wanted to talk about was just a little bit about the season. This is my favorite time of the year, not because of the snow, or cookies, or even spending time with family, it's because this time of the year brings out the best in people. When we pass people on the street, or in the grocery store, we might say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, or maybe we'll just smile and give the old Midwest nod. We don't care if that other person is gay, or straight, Muslim, or Jewish, or even who they voted for. We're just nice to them. We also recognize that there are people in our community that have less than us, and we all step up, and we donate food, deliver baskets, pick entire families to buy things for. We bake cookies for total strangers, and we pull random wishes off of a tree and grant those wishes. We don't ask for marital status, or skin color, and we don't care. We just do it. We're nice to each other. Be like that all the time, not just around the holidays. I know you can do it, because we do it now, so we should be able to do this throughout the year. And, if you're really only doing those nice things to look good in front of your coworkers, or your church group, or your neighbors, that's okay too. Fake it the rest of the year. Be nice to each other. I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and if you don't celebrate any of those things, we still hope you have a good day. Right now, persons who wish to address the mayor of the council on specific agenda items other than a public hearing should register their request at this time. We do not have any public hearings on the agenda today, so if you wish to speak on any of the agenda items, Bethany has some slips, and if you want to speak on any of the agenda items, you can sign up now. All right, I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, so we'll move right on to that agenda item. Item number four is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item. Do we have anybody? Why don't you hand those up here then? You have three minutes, up to three minutes, on a non-agenda item, and we have... Mr. Bushman! Ah, sorry, Bill Bushman. We got a couple... We have exceeded our Bushman capacity today. Fire chief, we're okay with this?
We're good.
We're good.
Well, after your initial comments, I suppose I should also say Merry Christmas to the common council. But, I'm here just... Back in March, I stood here along with some neighbors from an adjoining or nearby subdivision from Hunter Oaks, and we talked about the purchase of the land or parcel on Old 18 and Berleski Road. And, I thought there was some pretty lively conversation. The intent of that conversation, or from a council standpoint, was the purchase, but we did get into the usage. And, I think after discussing the traffic flow, potential noise, the fact that you wouldn't generate any tax revenue from the Department of Public Works if we were to build on that parcel, and the fact that I think the last planning, comprehensive plan indicated the best and highest use as you expand east for that parcel to be residential. But anyway, it did get past the purchase, and I think everybody was thankful for that. We agreed with the purchase in order to have the city control that property. And at that time, Mike, you had indicated that if there was any future discussion about the usage or zoning, that there would be neighborhood input. So, and I will certainly hold you to that, and I'm sure the other residents of these two subdivisions will also. So, bringing forward, or going forward to November and December, I see in the Finance Committee agenda, there was a discussion about the general obligation in the budget, in the bond. And, I noticed on page six that there was a line item for the purchase of a site for the Department of Public Works facility, $1,784,300, something to that effect. And, not addressing the site within the language in the usage of those funds, I contacted Dave Plisance, our alderman, who in turn contacted Cory, and I found out that it again was for the Department of Public Works. And, as you had indicated back in March, and Cory has indicated recently, the usage of that site has still not been determined, which is a good thing. I don't know when the... I think we're in the process of doing the comprehensive plan. I don't know the completion of that, but I'm here again to just reiterate that Hunter Oaks and Conifer, we are adamant about the usage of that as not being for the Department of Public Works. We are in residential neighborhoods. Our values are based on residential influence, not a commercial or a DPW across the street. I think we're going to have increased traffic at some point, if the Hunter Oaks, if and when that's developed, stage two. If the Broad 18 Berleski Road is developed, certainly more traffic. That's a whole different issue. But I just want to reiterate the need, and I wasn't sure, Cory, and I didn't ask this of Dave. I understand there were tax benefits to the city and probably the taxpayer by labeling that as a purchase, or using the funds for the DPW site. I don't know if you would have put residential in there, what effect that would have had on the bond issue or approval. Cory also had indicated that there are some options down the road. We're not locked into the usage of those funds for the DPW. Quite frankly, I don't know where we'd get the funds from, and I think everybody would agree with that, to build that facility. And I'm not here to criticize the Department of Public Works. I think they do a great job. They've always been very helpful for our needs. So, I guess that's my three-minute bell.
Thank you, Bill. And we don't normally do this, because it's really just addressing the council, but I knew this was going to come up. Cory and I talked about it. So, what you heard is correct. There is no purpose that has been determined by the council yet for that site, but for the purposes of the bond, we had to put something in there.
Yes.
Because it was discussed, that's what Cory chose, and Cory, if you want to speak to that for just a minute, I think it's important that people know that, because I want to make sure people don't think we're trying to pull one over on them or anything. This is...
I just want us to be informed, Mike.
Yes.
And if that indeed is going to be the usage, well, then I think we have to address values.
That has not been determined yet, Bill.
I don't think it has.
No, it hasn't. I just want to make sure now, because people are going to raise questions that are watching this, I want them to have a proper answer before we move forward.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, so whenever we borrow money, we get questions about what the purposes for our various expenditures are, and it's a little bit difficult with land acquisition when we're not 100% sure what the end use is going to be yet. So, that kind of left us, you know, in a position where we had to make a decision about, okay, what are we going to state is the purpose? So, even though we stated that purpose for the borrowing, because we had to state a purpose, it doesn't necessarily lock us into using the land for that purpose in the future. And also, I should note, it was never intended to be, okay, this is the final approval on the construction of a public works garage. Obviously, there would be a lot of steps that would have to happen between now and then to get a public works garage constructed, not least of which is figuring out the financial aspects and the money to fund that.
Thank you. Does that satisfy your...
Yeah, I wasn't here to discuss that.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that we're still thinking about it.
Sure.
When is the comprehensive plan supposed to be completed?
The question for those of you listening at home was, when is the comprehensive plan supposed to be completed? The short and best answer I can give you is, we don't know yet. We're still working on it, but there will be several more meetings regarding the comprehensive plan, as well as any decisions on what that land is used for. I'll also tell you it was on the county's shortlist for a jail and law enforcement center. All right, so, that exhausts agenda item number four. Agenda item number five, normally I wouldn't do a presentation for this meeting, because it's our holiday meeting, and we have the holiday get-together afterward, so we want to keep it short, but because the snow hasn't come yet, and I've already gotten a few questions about it, I asked Carolyn Peterson, who works at Midwest, I'm sorry, Midstate Independent Living Choices, to come up here and tell us a little bit about some of the challenges that people face when your sidewalks aren't clear and free of snow and ice, as our ordinance states. And that goes for the sidewalks, as well as the curb ramps that go into the crosswalks across the street. So, Carolyn, thank you very much for taking time out of your day to come and talk to us, and try and maybe shed some light on some of the challenges that people face.
Glad to be here. I am Carolyn... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Carolyn Peterson. I work at Midstate Independent Living Choices at 3262 Church Street. I am also a member of the Portis County Disability Coalition and the Portis County Health and Aging Commission, as well as several transportation committees throughout the city and the county, and some transportation committees on the state and national independent living network. So, when Mayor Wiesa called me last week and asked me if I talked to you about about snow removal, it's an issue I'm very passionate about, so I was rather happy to do it. Snow removal is an issue that affects me both personally and professionally. Personally, because I do use a mobility device, and professionally, because I am an advocate for persons with disabilities. We haven't had a lot of snow yet, and that's a good thing in my eyes, but as you... It's very important to shovel, even if we don't get that much snow, and remove the snow that's there, because as you know, by the... As you know, the ice does accumulate, and once there's a base, and the base of like snow and slush becomes ice, it's almost impossible to remove. And, once it blocks the curb ramps and the sidewalks, they're basically impossible for people with mobility devices. And I understand that with plows, them doing their jobs, and you might say, "Well, I just shoveled that curb ramp. I can't believe the plow went by like five minutes after I shoveled it." Well, it's kind of important, or it's very important actually, that you do go out right away and shovel that up, because once it turns to ice, it's pretty impossible to move without heavy equipment, and it's also pretty impossible for somebody with a mobility device. When I say mobility device, I do mean like walkers, wheelchairs, canes, or other devices. However, if you clear a sidewalk or a curb ramp, so it is possible for those items, then strollers, people pushing strollers, or people using bicycles, or just anybody, it's easier to get through there, and it's the coming good. So, in summary, I guess the main takeaway is, if you're able, shovel your curb ramps and sidewalks, and if you can possibly do a little more than your share, that is great, because you might be helping somebody who can't do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. If you're not familiar with Midstate Independent Living Choices, they're on the South Side, kind of by, what is that, Mountain Mud? Is that the coffee place over there? In the South Side shopping complex. Even if it's just a short-term thing, when I had my hipper placed, they helped me out with a couple of different things. Something as simple as putting on your socks. And they have all sorts of devices. They are free. They even have a tracked vehicle, so if you want to go out hiking, or some people have used it for hunting excursions, if you're confined to a wheelchair, that's free to use. So, I would urge you, if you have any sort of special need, whether it's big numbers on a phone, or Eric does this really cool thing with adaptive gaming, so if you can't control the little controllers, they have larger ones that you can use. But, check them out. If you know somebody that can use their services, by all means, refer them. Thank you again, Carolyn, for joining us this evening. Item number six is our consent agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda is before you, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by President Christensen, seconded by Marl. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk Yenter, could you please call the roll?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plisance?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Marl?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number seven is a resolution, a request from Wayne Bushman, representing Sunrise Point Ventures LLC, for a conditional use permit to construct five self-service storage buildings on the property located at 5001 Jerns Drive. Contrary to what you may have read, they're not cold storage, they are unheated storage. There was a report that came out that the city was looking for cold storage facility, or approving cold storage facilities. They're not cold storage, they're just regular old storage buildings, and yeah, just not heated.
In the wintertime, they're cold.
In the wintertime, they're cold. In the summer, they're hot, like a thermos. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion for approval.
Okay, we're going to give Plisance the motion, seconded by Shuda. What's his district? Discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk Yenter, could you call that roll?
Marl?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plisance?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is a resolution, a request from Alex Bruder, representing Midwest Heritage Inn of Stevens Point LP, for a conditional use permit to install an off-premise signed and unaddressed parcel off of US Highway 10 East, with the parcel identified in your packet, consistent with Chapter 23.02, Sub 2, Sub A, Sub 3, Sub J.
Move approval.
Motion by Niebon, seconded by Fischler. Discussion? Comments from the audience? See, I take it right up to the awkward silence, and then I move along. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, could you please call that roll?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plisance?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Marl?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is a request from the city of Stevens Point to purchase the property located at 4213 Simona Street, with the parcel identified in your packet, and an unaddressed parcel off of Ridge Court parcel also identified in your packet.
So moved.
Motion by Shuda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Keemer. Discussion?
Quick comment.
Yes, sir.
This is the third or fourth time since I've been involved in council, just a little over a year, that we've gone to purchasing land, and every time, we seem to be the ones that are always giving in on having to take on the extra house, or whatever, with purchases. It seems like we should try to get a little tighter and just get what we want. And if we are looking to purchase and then sell these houses in the end, I think that the city should be looking to do inspections in ahead of time, so that they know what they're getting into as far as additional costs when the time comes to sell the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Marl?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plisance?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10 is the Housing Affordability Report for primary year 2022. We have a speaker, Andrea Olson.
Hi, Andrea Olson, 410 Franklin Street. So, I reached out to the city about this study with a few questions, because I was concerned that not all residentially zoned land was included in the study. This... I got a well-thought-out response from Adam, and he said it isn't. If residentially zoned properties have a different future planned land use, they aren't included in the study. I suggested that having a comprehensive picture of Stevens Point potential land availability for future housing, these parcels really should be included. So, should parcels that are zoned commercial, but the future planned use is residential? Since this study is part of the comprehensive plan, seeing these parcels might impact future developments. This is relevant data. Maybe common council might vote differently when being presented with greenfield land to purchase for housing when an 18-acre plot of residential land is currently available for housing, no R-word, suburban development needed. The report even includes a list and map of undeveloped parcels in the municipality that are zoned for residential development, and a list of all undeveloped parcels. These are written out by... within the study, but not... Okay. It excludes the... Sorry. Okay, so, for instance, a hot topic that the property, because it just had a live burn, or had a burn on it too, at the corner of HH and Hoover is 18 acres. I feel the land fits perfectly into the presentation under Goal A, Policy A1.1, create zones where maximum lot sizes, smaller lots, and mixed use would be considered as part of an overall design theme, perhaps using traditional neighborhood principles. If this R1 zone land was rezoned, planned development zoning using the traditional neighborhood principles with R3 lot sizes, when accounting for streets, over 150 single-family homes could be built there. If townhomes, rowhomes are built along HH and Hoover, typical of less desirable lots, even more homes could be developed. When the city discusses no residential land, and we have this, what's going on? Pretty soon, I'm guessing that this land is going to be brought to a common council about rezoning, because a commercial investor bought it, and they have it listed right now for commercial use as for sale. The investor paid 2.1 million for the 18 acres, per the GIS sales records. He paid commercial prices per acre, or $116,666 per acre, or $58,333 per half acre. The assessed value for a half acre on the residential lots right behind that are 33K. So, he overpaid. However, an easier pill for them to swallow if we did say that this really should stay residential, is that 150 houses is about 14K per lot, and assessed value for a 6K lot is 15,600. So, I think that we should take a look at if you could get $26,250,000 worth of a commercial property on that land, because if you figure each 150 houses at $175,000 per house, which is low, that's what your tax base would be for that 18 acres. So, I think that this data should be included in the study, no matter what, because it is relevant for making future decisions.
Thank you very much. Director Knosky, do you have anything you want to add on that?
All really excellent points by the previous speaker. I would just remind council, this is a state-mandated report, and we have to meet the minimum qualifications to submit this report on an annual basis. I don't consider this to be the driving factor of future development in the city. That's our comprehensive plan, and that we are going through an update on, especially on the east side, and the 18 acres that Andrew had mentioned earlier is part of that. And so, those are things that we look at as part of the comprehensive plan. That's kind of the guiding document for future development. The Housing Affordability Report is checking a box for a state-mandated report, so.
Thank you. A motion to accept that report, place it on file.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Christensen?
Yeah.
Christensen, Fischler?
Yep.
Christensen, motion. Fischler seconded. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plisance?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
I mean, Lang, sorry.
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Marl?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 11, speaking of comprehensive plans, is a request from the city of Stevens Point to amend the city of Stevens Point comprehensive plan for the purpose of adding a chapter outlining neighborhood comprehensive plan for the Gerke Park/Washington Elementary School neighborhood. Said neighborhood is roughly bounded by Maria Drive to the north, Interstate 39 to the east, Main Street to the south, and Division to the west.
This is a technical request from the Community Development Department. We have already passed this via amendment to our existing comprehensive plan through a resolution. When we submitted that amendment to the state of Wisconsin, Department of Administration, requirement of part of Chapter 66, they came back and said, "Well, you pass it as a resolution, it should really have been passed as an ordinance." So, in order to meet yet again state requirements, I... This is just a pretty straightforward request to approve as an ordinance, not a resolution.
So moved.
By Shore?
I'll second.
Seconded by Keemer. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Marl?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plisance?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that is approved. These next couple come to us direct from the city clerk's office. Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing polling location for District 1. That's going to be Midstate Technical College at 1001 Center Point Drive.
So moved.
Thank you. I'm sorry, seconded by Burr. I'm sorry, Carrie, that was seconded by Christensen. I'm sorry. Motion by Christensen, seconded by Burr. Discussion? Yes.
It mentions in the resolution that Midstate will no longer be able to accommodate District 4's. 4's. So is there a site that's set for District 4 polling, or is that still to be determined?
Clerk enter.
Currently, Midstate houses both District 4 and District 1. They said they can no longer accommodate two districts at their location. So District 1 is actually moving to the former Great Lakes building. District 4 will remain at Midstate.
Okay.
And it's kind of confusing, because I think it's 1001 and 1101.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Right, right. Okay. Any other questions? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
LaSance.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Chuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 13 is a resolution for District 10 polling location. That used to be at the Ruth Guilfrey Center with the water damage. We are now moving that to the City Water Department. Oh, I didn't even think about that. I'm usually pretty quick on that. Water damage at the Ruth Guilfrey, but we're moving it to the Water Department. That's funny.
Move by Fishler?
Second.
Seconded by Burr.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So is this going to be a temporary move, or are we looking at keeping it at this location until, I mean, unless something changes?
I would consider it a longer-term solution. The county's not even sure what they're going to do with the Ruth Guilfrey building yet, so we'll keep it at the Water Department until a better opportunity comes up.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Chuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
LaSance.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 14 is a resolution establishing an alternate in-person absentee voting location. This will be the City Hall conference room. Any questions there, or a motion? Moved by Fishler, seconded by Morrow. Discussion.
Does this mean that we're not going to be able to vote right at the front counter now?
Clerk enter. The clerk's office is still an absentee in-person voting location, but this is a second location. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. All in-person voting will then take place in the city conference room for in-person voting only.
The in-person absentees, right.
Correct.
Okay. And that's just around the corner from the clerk's office, in case you don't know the city hall layout. Okay, any other comments? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
LaSance.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Chuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 15 is a resolution directing a spring primary election, should there need to be one. As you can see in the resolution, in the event that there are three or more qualified candidates for any aldermatic district, the date of the election shall be February 20th, 2024. We don't know that yet, and we won't until probably January 2nd. But in the event that there are three or more candidates in any district, there will be a primary. All or shore? Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Burr. Discussion.
Would there be a presidential primary, right? Or do you...
Spring election primary.
In the spring?
It's for the spring, yeah.
That's for April.
Oh, is that March?
Right.
Anyway, okay. Never mind.
Presidential primaries are on spring election day.
Yes, April.
This is about primaries for the spring elections.
Getting them all, yes, getting those confused. Thanks.
Yeah, there's like eight elections next year.
It's crazy.
Sure?
Why, thank you. So have we considered, like, going, this has been our practice, and I guess we're doing this tonight because of calendar.